...meeting of the Undercity School Board for this Tuesday, September ninth, twenty twenty-five, at six oh six PM. At this time, we have our, uh, a school board member, Del Mary, to offer a few invitations.
We stand proud here. But we have to follow, we thank you. We thank all of the things that you've been doing for us and all of the things you've done. Lord, we know that we made mistakes, Lord, but you know, you know how hard, Lord. And you can get life, guide it in the right direction. We thank for everyone that's here, Lord. We thank our city and our parents. We thank for our limitations, so the definitely right decision that are pleasing your sight. All of our schools, Lord, that fighting hard for everything out here. It's a difficult task, but they're, they can do it, Lord, with your help. And we know everything that we do, except you, the God in the right way. As long as we put you first, we know everything's gonna be alright. Thank you, Lord. Thank you for being here, and we thank for allowing us to serve the people of this community. You know the best of your acts and give them that.
Come on, I see, hard, carry, coast. Forward, march. March them, march. Come on, up. Left, right. Freezing, coast. Carry, coast. Forward, march.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Constitution of America. The Constitution of America, and the Constitution of the United States of America.
We could act in a federal, uh, Williams and, and, uh, for the, uh, all these. Alright, at this time, uh, the time. Alright, at this time, the adoption of the agenda.
Mrs. Sampernero?
Present.
Ms. Hayline?
Present.
Wilson?
Present.
Mr. Berry?
Present.
Ms. Cooper?
Present.
Mr. Johnson?
Present.
Ms. Shellen?
Present.
All are present.
At this time, we have the adoption of the agenda.
This President, I would like to add that we, um, can add two items. One is a, uh, quick on explanation removal of accelerated reading program in schools. A second is a property agreement with the board involved from the.
Second.
Second.
Alright, it's the move in second that we add two agenda items, but, uh, we're gonna vote on each one separately. Alright?
Needs to be unanimous, but.
And agrees to be unanimous vote in order to add an agenda.
Uh, Mr. Lawrence, point of order, uh, since the motion was made to add both of them, why would we vote to separate it out?
Uh, it could not be a strong power vote.
Okay, then I'd like to amend my motion, uh, to add the accelerated reading program to the agenda.
Second.
It's the move in second that we add the accelerated reading program to the agenda as, uh, the second agenda item, D.
Uh, we got, we got, uh, uh, the business, which would be five D.
And, uh, it's the move in second that we add that.
Discussion, please. I understand, but as to the reason for the motion and, okay, that's all I want. The reason the motion was brought up, uh, Madam President, he said we have a lot of our, uh, constituency citizens of the community here, uh, that were concerned and had questions in reference to the accelerated reading program. Mr. Moore, I thought had an excellent job of explaining, uh, the district's position. That we tried to get that out on, uh, social media, but not everybody reads everybody's social media. We had a lot of questions coming in and there were good points of ways. That's why we wanted to have this for discussion purpose and consideration, uh, because of the constituency and the public, uh, asking for it, so.
Alright, we, uh, have a motion, number second, to add accelerated reading to our, uh, the agenda item. It's five D. All in favor, uh, well, one all, ladies, what do you realize?
Mr. Sampernero?
Or.
Ms. Hayline?
In favor.
Mr. Wilson?
In favor.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
In favor.
Ms. Shellen? Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Six in favor, one again.
Second. It's the move in second that we add to the consent agenda. Now, this will be three D. We will add the quantitative endeavor agreement, boys and girls, uh, of what these are.
Discussion.
Discussion. You're not, uh, all in favor, who say? Well.
Just roll call.
Roll call, you can roll call.
Mr. Sampernero?
In favor.
Ms. Hayline?
In favor.
Mr. Wilson?
In favor.
Mr. Berry?
In favor.
Mr. Johnson?
In favor.
Ms. Shellen?
In favor.
Ms. Cooper?
In favor.
Six in favor, one opposed.
Alright.
I'd like to, I'd like to add up here as well. Oh, you might add that, separate on, separate on.
She said it.
No, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Now, I would like, I would like, uh, the table with votes that can be voted on tonight and move it to a new meeting on the fifteenth to pass the vote.
Second. Alright, the motion has been made, it's a vote, we, that's five A, agenda item, who this is item, favor that?
Discussion. So, uh, Madam President, uh, I believe the reason Ms. Sampernero wanted to make the motion, uh, was we had numerous questions from the community, uh, in reference to the budget. And not all those questions could be answered, and there were some very good questions that I felt like were probably very logical questions to be answered or answers to the questions. But, uh, at this point in time, I feel like we need to leave some answers to those questions. And so that's why I'm realizing we've got a timed schedule, we have to have it ready by the fifteenth. Um, you know, something like a mini meeting or something of that nature, that would be on Monday, September fifteenth. I think that's a little too late. Yes, ma'am, yes, sir. So, uh, that was, I think, the genesis of the motion. Let's get it.
We will discuss it. Yeah, um, also, I had, um, many questions, and gathering from some communications I received, that there were multiple people asking questions, and I guess they thought we all were sitting in a circle doing it together. Um, however, that was not where my questions came from. I have not had substantive answers to my questions. Um, there, there's things in the budget that are not clear, um, supplies, materials. We have different categories, miscellaneous, um, there's nine dollar, and we're talking millions of dollars. I'm not talking a thousand or two thousand, we're talking millions of dollars that I am not clear on what they're being spent on. I also have concerns that we have such a centralized budget that it's really difficult for this board to discern that the money is following the students. Um, we have monies also going to each school in the same dollar amount. However, we know that every school has a different plan for operation. So, and equity's purpose is to ensure that our students are getting what they need. So, a school that has more students should not be penalizing given less money comparatively than other schools. And so we have students who aren't getting what they should be getting because they go to a school that has a higher population. And those things need to be altered. Um, I have brought these up, I, look, the timeline isn't mine. I got my budget book when I got it. I also have full kinds of, two days after I got my budget book, I sat down, put this stuff in a spreadsheet. Tried to make it as easy as possible, follow what I was asking for and to get answers. There may be very logical answers, I don't know though. I have no idea, but instead the questions were taken as some, something other than my question. So, without those answers, I would be a irresponsible board member, asking that everybody else on this board, they can't answer them, um, to pass this project, everybody.
Madam President? Yes. Uh, and this question is kind of too much, for colleagues like Mr. Moore. Uh, I know we did that, I find that few questions worth asking. I, I do come in and I, I see some questions, wouldn't quite answer the due to, uh, why seems if you ask this a question, then it feel like the questions weren't told you answered. Um, I'm not saying it was already or it hadn't, but on the flip side, we do have a timeline, and we do have this passing agenda item. It's in any way possible, and this is for my fellow colleagues here, is it any way possible for the vote, uh, that you often ask the question, or there's no way possible that your questions can't be answered before we bring the vote up, or we get the agenda item on tonight?
I think the, the majority of the.
Plus, we only have thirty minutes to answer.
But if anyone has a question, if this is our second meeting on the budget, and every board member knew about the first meeting, if you had questions, then you should have been at the meeting. And, and, and to, to wait and, and put this off, and to delay the vote, that's jeopardizing our school district. Because it's the budget that we're voting out. So, I'm appealing to the board of chiefs, I have to accept this. Not, not accept this, you're the board.
Yes, ma'am. Um, Mr. Sally, I appreciate what you just said, but we have time to answer the questions that are being asked. As I said before, these are types that they have concerns, they want this one question, they want the question. It's a, we have several things left, we shouldn't put them off this time.
We had a meeting, um, a week ago, and every one of them who was sitting here with concerns should have asked those questions.
Yes, Sally, I could attend to you because I was under 11. I'm saying.
Because it's a very impressive, remember that's if you're not here. So, if you were not encouraged to be here, uh, to ask your, my, uh, if, if, I, I, I see the, and you were here. Yes, you were, yes, you were. But my point is to not delay the agenda item for the sake of one or two, three or four or five people. Because you still make it, you still can get your questions answered, but not at the cost of putting it out on the table.
Yes.
And I want to make sure, and I make this clear, this is a board, we are serious about our accountability and transparency. And from day one, we have made it our effort to get stakeholder input. You know that about us, especially me, because I have spoken that time and time again. And so, here's a moment where some didn't get their questions answered for whatever reason. But we did hold a public hearing. This, the superintendent's office and his administrative staff are very respectful people. They welcome your questions, and, and if you give them adequate time, they will answer them. So, I don't wanna, uh, it could be any kind of neglect on their part, or the board's part, because you know what we stand for. There is some misinformation out there, and, and truth matters. And we're gonna stand for truth, we're gonna stand for, uh, accountability and transparency. And so each board member will make their vote, and they're just the vote, as, uh, as whether or not we go forward with the approval of this vote.
Mr. Cooper.
Alright, uh, vote call please.
Wait, Mr. Cooper, no, but, I'm, what, I'm not saying anyway, say perform that the school board and board aren't doing a job. I think they're doing a job, I think the questions maybe come out and didn't get answered, so, through, uh, they shouldn't get answered for whatever reason. I'm just saying that one person's got a question, it's not a new joke, it's, it's one matter.
Vote call please. Can we please have people vote on that? Yes, the adoption.
Hello, yes, sir. Oh, Lord, brother, please, remove.
Oh, yes. Yeah, we, we are, oh, Lord, whether or not to remove Friday, uh, the, uh, business, uh, agenda, that we not adopt the, uh, budget for twenty twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six. That's what we. Remove all the one table, that's, that's right.
Mr. Sampernero?
Well, there's a, technically she would, because it was an item brought up, I believe, uh, for unanimous votes, therefore it wasn't. The table itself wasn't, um, denied, but.
I feel that, uh, the move that you brought, and there's a war in it, that a person had about doing that as something new, you have to have the right to come in, so, it's something out of how, how we're gonna care about it. I mean, there's multiple lines on the, sort of, ways on the agenda table, but I, I understand that the temp now is on right up front, you saying, like, remove it, so. That, the removal is an agenda item of itself, my first. But not one contemplating part of the meaning of, right, of the person, that's right. Therefore, a question from the audience could occur without having to sign in part of the system. But I, I, I understand, I understand, I understand, uh, the question about the removal, but they have to be delayed to be, to, uh, to be moved off the table. That's your full problem, sir, I agree.
We're, we're, we're about to have a roll call vote as to whether or not to remove Friday of any business item agenda.
Madam President?
Yes.
Would you like for Ms. Crosser to speak now or after? She, it was, she had a request to speak.
Do you want to speak now?
Well, I would just speak with, uh, you know, with the agenda.
Then it would only have to be spoken, no, you can always speak or talk about the removal. So, open the door, let them speak on the removal that we need to be performed, so that's do that. If nobody can speak on the removal, then we move forward with the vote at that point. Absolutely.
Mr. Sampernero?
No, no.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This is only the move.
Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Excuse me, ma'am, before you speak, oh, Ms. Cooper, if you don't mind, if you keep on, if anybody that wants to speak, you know, they're coming at a good time, or we won't ask for that, people come and just, just, just sit down.
Only a three minute limit, so, back to the time, just, those who want to speak. On the move of Friday.
I just have a question. Oh, did you see, you add D and B, because it was out of order with six to one, so was it added to the?
It gotta be unanimous, so, Lord.
It wasn't unanimous, right, so, going back to.
Okay, speaking to the, uh, removal, I think, um, one, I appreciate the, uh, um, this is for the, the comments about being accountable and transparent. And, uh, and that is what we're wanting as, um, as people. Uh, Ms. Shellen, I know that, uh, it's very frustrating for y'all to be able to be here for meetings, and that the public can't be here for every meeting, to participate. Um, and when it's like questions, I can see where that is frustrating. However, I think that all of these questions should have been asked, these material questions should have been asked by the board members themselves. And I think as, um, to prevent you about being accountable and get the audit findings about board members' responsibilities, I think it's in the best interest of both the board members, the public, and the students, that we have, that everybody has full confidence in the budget and in their vote, so that therefore, you know, when the audit comes, we've got the, we've got the full understanding. And I have no doubt, there was a, I was at the meeting before with the finance, and it was a very easy explanation for one of these about the term. I have no doubt that these could be answered. However, it is in the best interest of all that this time is taken to do it, and if it goes on to the fifteenth, then we can do this and get the questions answered and still have this budget with no jeopardy to the students. I would counter that I think that removing and taking this time is in the best interest of the students, to ensure that the dollars are following their students' education. Thank you. So, I feel so very, for, if, uh, if these, uh, like, these people that were sitting out, that everybody, this time, there was never a question that the board could enjoy the form of this, never. And that was, actually, that's not true, God can, to a meeting, you will not hear that sound, but you saw. When things are not, anything for you, but you believe, I have taken all the meetings, including, including the, the meeting with the superintendent, the board president, myself, and the board, my time, and we'll discuss the budget. I tell you, if I had to, we discuss the budget. And tonight, again, I have the time, I have the space, and I've spoken on several speeches. So, what else do you want me to do? Tell me, what, what else can you want me to do? I would think the same, I would say this, that I did question the five, uh, with the five superintendents here, and actually, Ms. Cooper was very receptive to, um, receiving my questions, and the five superintendent was not. And, uh, I submitted my questions, anything else, to the finance chair at the time, uh, Mr. Sampernero, and, uh, he had to get those answers from the superintendent, and those answers were not received, uh, to the budget. Those questions, in part, reflected things that I think that, um, would have brought a lot to light, and would have prevented the board from having such, such significant mention in the audit report. And that's why I say I think this is in the best interest of both the board, the public, and the students. Thank you.
Couple of the fact, the last couple of years, looking late in our response to the audit, we're counting there.
Twenty-four, twenty-five, no funds, but, but I, I'm feeling this tone that monies are not following the press. Location of all fours, all relevant, one body count, four hundred and twelve permits. Broken base, four thousand fifteen. They've seen one million, six hundred fifty-four thousand, one hundred dollars. General funds, million, one hundred twenty-two, six eighty-four. Ten thousand, fifty-five, broken for the add-on. They've seen four million, one hundred forty-two thousand, six hundred sixty dollars. General fund sales tax, it's three million, one hundred twenty-three, six sixty-eight. The level. Million high school, one live, five hundred sixteen students. Four people on the original base, within that, that four thousand fifty-one, two million, seventy-one thousand, seven hundred and four dollars. General fund twenty-four, twenty-five, three million, three hundred twenty-three thousand, seven hundred forty-four dollars. Four people, ten thousand fifty-five, I see five million, one eighty-eight, three hundred and eight. Sales tax, general fund and sales tax, four million, eight sixty-four, six fifteen. This is a copy of those numbers that follow the old years. Based on, I know that there's a lot of lessons that we may use, but the accusation that this monies are not following the press, that's my.
Thanks, I have, uh, got the information, now, okay. I think that a fellow board member, or the former board member, Ms. Shellen, you serve this vice, uh, to, uh, to, uh, uh, as myself, please. This information, asking questions, and I ought to say to Mr. Moore and this side, this is nothing pointed at all. I believe I have a stock record of asking questions for the last four years, let's start the stack. I was recalled when we tend to finance meeting, and were not allowed to ask the questions. We had always raised our hands and stayed and answered questions last year, but it wasn't, something happened this year. And I would say, yeah, and you and I would agree, but that's my first question, but then line item by line item, about that, for one, was why is the former superintendent's contact benefit go from thirty thousand to three hundred thousand? And if, and my fault for not giving more, had we looked at that, had we, what was delved into it? Then we would have known ahead of time what was happening. We would have known that there was a contact that hadn't been approved. So, that's why we have to go line item by line item. We don't have all that information, that's wonderful, that's, right, Mr. Moore, right? But we don't get, and if I know, you say, when he was got on the board, and Ms. Neil got on the board, then, uh, Hayline was on the board, do you remember how hard it was for y'all to get questions to get an agenda item on? You will never know. And every board member, according to this conversation, obviously, can put an item on the agenda. And I just asked now three, as board members, come together, I think the finance committee, and not one board member asked a question. And you're looking at a hundred and seventy-five million dollars in assets. Okay, so, I ask you, please, address this, where the agenda items are there, by just post-fund fifty-nine, no work due. You can get all the questions, you stay placed, and you build, and you, you build contracts with us, we're happy. But you understand, one question, seeing while we have the earliest, it's, it's, it's a time of God, that's where it's, this board or another board.
a time ago, I still get this border another day, was there not a response for, from these audits?
Um, first off, I'd like to say I have, sort of, worked for the board, and played with the board, and I've played with elected brothers and rights. So I do understand, and quite frankly, that I run different times, 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 but I do ask you to act as a team, talking, when it comes to budget. Um, I am also a chief financial officer, I, I have a degree in finance, so I do understand what, what you need to do in this place. On top, this one's about it, with an S one, but, but I want to say, please, exercise caution. We, this is our school. These are our students. This is our, our student students. Please, pay attention to us, and make sure that all valid questions are answered. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Go call the board, please.
Mr. Sampanero?
In favor of the new item, that in the business.
Ms. Hayline?
In favor.
Mr. Wilson?
In favor.
Mr. Berry?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Opposed.
Ms. Sheldon?
Opposed.
Ms. Cooper?
Opposed.
Three in favor, four opposed.
At this time, I like to make most of the, uh, on the business, I have made five, make more. Uh, listen, listen, Chris Lawrence, do we need to make most of the adopted agenda now or today? Um, my most instinct adopted agenda is, uh, with all the changes. Okay, no change, no.
All is agreed, the second of your outpouring agenda. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, aye. Ayeset. All right, at this time, then, um, emails for the public announcement, uh, matter of information placed there, uh, disregarding a village renewal, uh, public finance attorney office, with the bowls of Shafter, and Mr. Shafter was here to make a comment.
Thank you, uh, Wes Shafter, all chapter of the public finance attorneys, let's go forward. The, uh, this item is derived under the public meetings laws, prior to adoption of the miller's renewal or a new tax, this is a little, uh, the public meetings require public notice, so there's no formal action to be had, right? There really no discussion. This is just a notice that we read the record to be published, and at the October seventh meeting is when we will have discussion and formal action on putting the millers on April sixth. In regards to, this general description of millers, this, uh, these are two millers, you're, you're standard support millage, excluding professional salaries, if one of them, it's a six mils, and the others are approximately fourteen mils tax, it's an operation and maintenance, that's cool, yourselves. So, they're ten, um, they're, they're ten-year critical taxes, they're, we're here in the end year. So with that, um, unless you all have any, any questions, all of us read this notice and the record, and at the next meeting, we can have a more detailed question. If these require additional rules, support, excluding professional salaries, and then maintenance and operation of public schools. So, all these notes. Notes are given in accordance with section nineteen point one of Title Forty-two of Louisiana Vice Staffing to nineteen fifty, that the Monroe City School Board of the City of Monroe, State of Louisiana, acting as governing authority of the City of Monroe, respect the school's rule, on our bill of seven, twenty twenty-five, at Draymond meeting place, two thousand six dollars arrived, near the other George Mill and Mill at six P M. What discussed is consider adopting a resolution, ordering on you an election on April fifteenth, twenty twenty-six, to authorize renewal, uh, few applicable taxes of the district, subject to approval by a qualified visiting area, and then pass for such facts to be left there out. About to be reported in the minutes, and then, next meeting, well, without the reservation, we consider without the reservation, authorizing, uh, it, it, it beyond April, out.
And, 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 and. Continuing our.
A move on, send on.
Is the room, and, is that the group there, I think, all in favor?
Uh.
With the close hang, we're not motion there.
Madam President, can we get, uh, uh, I know it's gonna come up, that we already discussed the thing, I guess that we could, uh, uh, about when, uh, stipending the, this year. You can, you can slide that. Come on, slide that, come on.
I believe in Madam President, and I do believe that superintendent Moore put out a date for the stipending to be delivered upon the, the top poll attempt. And I asked earlier in the finance meeting that all appropriate withdrawals be withheld from the checks prior to the four year payment. Uh, we've had some problems with that in the past, I know with the new system, that hopefully it has been corrected, but there are some issues that are pertaining to the draws in the funds that were granted earlier. I would also like to add, from the finance meeting, there were mention of stipends. Stipends for people who are coaches, and all kind of various positions. I know this may be an inappropriate comment, but I never hear a mention of stipends for past five years. But you need to go least than likely, and you all saw it too.
Madam President, now, just for fairness sake, this law, if they're coming from, uh, for those stipends, of course, you have to, uh, and, 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 and this, by all, we have to, this, 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 for those who smoke, they're, they're, they're.
I agree, and a lot of times, we have custodial workers, we have pastoria workers, we have secretaries, and all have to make that function in this school business. They're all part of the family, they're all part of the team, but so often, only those people work so-called certified gifts, if the school's not operating, our secretaries, the clerks, custodial workers, pastoria workers, all those people have to be in this work. But they're always left out in that stipend, in that.
That's not what that would mean, but, and, and, and for the records, respectively, there are a number of, there are educators, there are a number of secretary, bookkeepers, that serve those particular activity roles, and they're all conscious.
So far, you.
I hope that you'll participate, just like there are a lot of teachers that don't participate in that. I just want that player, not getting all the, but just to try to say, that, that, as if someone is left out, because this is something that's so rigid, this is extra curriculum, uh, and it's either that goes beyond the budget, as in a quarter's activity, right? So we have.
You know, I understand, and I just wanted to say, especially for Bill Wilson, you know, we teach our, we have our teachers teach at the, yeah, the Southern Union Avenue. But, okay, but we don't want our students to be taught of the Southern Union Avenue. When they get tested, they're tested at the national hour, but we need to do something about it.
Thank you.
At this time, we, this is, I am a, adoption of the general fund and special revenue fund resolution, the last budget for twenty-four hundred five A M, beginning by the, probably month seventy-six.
I saw you on there, and it's, and it's second, both of you made a second, you didn't want to lie. So, first, it tells me, I have a personal matter. You have to play on the, uh, I have a fire-based budget.
All right.
Before we go.
I, 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 I,
And that's why I didn't even say that with those schools wanting to continue who they are, we allow them to do so.
And I appreciate that. My question was, I've been told by several different people that we've already spent the money for AR this year. And I wanted to validate if that was or if not for this school. At Neville Junior, the one round, the brothers, the one, one, six, seven, eight, nine.
That answer is no.
I think, I think that's fine. I just wanted to make sure, I wanted to make sure that we weren't wasting any resources.
For the right hand, now the president, I'd like to thank, um, our superintendent for, um, really delving into the situation and coming up with solutions. Uh, a lot of times, and we've had superintendents in the past that would not do that. So I just want to publicly thank you for that. Ms. Bryant, private.
Well, I may not be the speaker privately, if I understood what you just said, is that you've done an about face to U L I I's school to make that decision.
It wasn't, it wasn't about face. I, I, I just researched and researched, uh, what we had, and it's good, and however, uh, we did a session for those who that wanted to utilize this thing at all. With some, with some data, and that not be teased at the students.
But your letter, Mr. Moore, says that if, if your decision was overturned by the board, then they would be allowed to. And that's why I'm asking, that's what I mean by about face, a misunderstanding on most of the people here. Your letter said that, uh, your position would remain unless it was overturned by the board. If you weren't, if we weren't even allowed to put it on the agenda tonight, so there was no way the board could overturn your decision. Yet, I'm just hearing you say that if Lexington, Saliano, Neville Junior, if they want to pay for that AR themselves, you are going to allow this to happen.
I'm strict, and I sent that out. Yes, ma'am. And I sent it out to the board members, and I wouldn't know about all these that don't have a reason, I thought that was about the last word.
Well, I have talked to every principal at each of those schools, and they are unaware of that. I can guarantee you that. They are unaware that they have been given a position, first, it's AR, but they're all fine. I don't know if any of the principals are here today, but I've been looking, probably maybe I've spoken to each and everyone else, and I'm thinking what they told me.
Well, I'm betting you know right now, they, they are giving that option.
Please communicate everything.
Ms. Walker, uh, Ms. Walker, are you, are you Ms. Walker? Uh, is that Walker?
Maybe Jared, um.
Jared.
Jared Walker, yeah.
No questions, okay, sir. Uh, Christie, okay, Christie, Justin, no questions. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Fifty, Fifty.
Our schools are allowed to, uh, they'll, but they, and what I'm understanding is that we have already purchased the storage open, and they're together.
The district company.
The district company, yes, okay. So, I don't understand why there was no input from teachers or principals or parents or the board is the reason. You know, the board had their reasons, but why are teachers, you know, people that are asked, are we paying our teachers more because there's something, another thing with the normal, you know? The kind of thing about our courses, and it's just, you know, they kind of fall mad off.
Corbett, Alvin, you just.
I'm Virginia.
Alberta, thank you.
So, I'm Corbett, I'm Virginia.
Okay.
How are you?
Just fine, how are you?
So I am a graduate of the university of sports, and I now have four children, so third grade, second grade, and fifth grade. And I have, it represents like four, five, four. But the budget was proposed for a third rule, the budget proposed for a third rule is indicative that the funds are certainly available for AR. It costs eight dollars and nine cents per student, eight dollars and nine cents per student to participate in AR. Um, Saliano will cost forty eight hundred dollars for one year, and Neville Junior High will cost roughly thirty seven hundred dollars for one year. Which is a drop in the bucket in this budget. In fact, Neville Junior High has already purchased AR with their own Title I budget, money, not the district's money. From my understanding. Now, now, two thousand and three high has first.
No, ma'am, they're not.
We now back.
They are, they are, we will support them if they, if they want AR, we will support them.
Okay, well, I'm totally with that. Um, from my understanding, the schools are available to use their Title I funds and choose along with their school improvement plan before this. My question is, if they can use their funds with their expression, then why are they being denied using access to this program? We expect teachers to differentiate student needs, but we won't let school leaders address student needs. Interesting enough, parents were sent a questionnaire today regarding AR. And should this removal of that program, um, been addressed prior to today where a survey went out? And the results closed at six o'clock, and there's overwhelming results from Lexington, New Valley, Neville Junior High, and Neville High School. Well, yes, and potentially those were the only responses. And those are kind of like the starter things, you know, everybody's ready up and go. So, um, I have a lot of other things to say, but I have sixteen more time, and, um, thank you.
And, uh, Ms. Ms. Patrick, Ms. Patrick, yes, ma'am, oh, I, I, I deny them privately.
Um, yes, and I would, I would like to say, I think some words were used to, like accusation. And with us questioning, I don't want this to be accusations on anything and against anybody. This is simply trying to understand, maybe transparent. And my mind, that in order, if, if I was voting, I would want to be able to know if something increased by three hundred percent or by a million dollars or whatever in the budget, I would know that before I voted. And, uh, so it's not an accusation, it's ensuring that we have all asked about the questions and have an answer to our satisfaction. And that's not just the public, that is the board members. Um, many of you are on the board that I recognized when I came here and asked questions of the previous superintendent. And at that time, that was not accusations, it was trying to understand. So at that time, it was simply trying to understand, but I do feel that if we all did a better job and took our time to ensure we understood what we were voting on. That those issues were being caused, and I'm sorry, um, again, going to be further term, and I have submitted some questions. I did not put my information on there. I would like to add that, so that those questions, uh, the answers could be returned to me, so I did not put my contact information. So if I can submit that, like, after the meeting, I would like to get those answers, thank you very much.
Senator, uh, is that the last question? I, I, I have, I have, thank you, don't worry. The board will, in all fairness, uh, and it's all fair to both sides, I, I hear our constituents, you know, asking about the AR. I have a daughter, that's in elementary in our district, you know, she has the AR, you know? But in all fairness to, to them, all fairness to the leadership team, leadership team is there to make decisions for this district. Uh, I'm pretty sure our leadership team did not wait for one day and say, hey, they're doing the AR. So they did some research, they, they collected some data, and wanted to get to that point. Um, so, you know, we say, okay, get input from teachers, get input from parents, but their decisions that have to be made throughout this district, that doesn't always include that input from teachers or that input from parents, because that's a part of being in the leadership role, in the leadership role. Man, I, I didn't give up anybody where it might have come, but I, I. You can be ruled on, you want, that's, that's, that's quite right, you can be whoever you want to be, anyway. Uh, so, in all fairness to everybody, they have a job to do, the board has a job to do, it's in his thumb, and they have to give their inputs, and the teachers give their input whenever it's needed. So I'm pretty sure some teachers who are us interview, uh, upon making this decision. So in all fairness to everybody, not just this board, not just the, you know, constituents and the leadership, so they're just doing their job as they would if it was in another capacity, whether it's AR, or whether it's something, whether it's something else, that can help enhance our school business. That's, that's their job, and that's the job of this board, and when the constituents come and give us input, you know, yes, may, maybe everything, maybe not, the board may not take it, but the board, you take input of the constituents as well, and, and try to make the development of our schools. You know, some may think, no, but yes, they do. So in all fairness to everybody, you know, everybody got a role, everybody got a role, and, and they, they made a decision based on the data that they did, they do such far, along with the superintendent, so it was all, I don't think nobody's trying to take anything away from any student. But for the superintendent to say, okay, if, if those schools or whomever that you may be here to represent, want to tend to use those services, okay, the district will support it. So, we, we'll some give and take there. I think that's fair.
I want to add to, I'd like to add to what board member Johnson said. And I want you all to have some, um, you know, confidence in our process, because we have built in protocols that would have addressed your concerns, you people today. And that is this, we have a committee process, we have board committees, we have a board curriculum committee with a chair and two additional board members that will call in to vet whatever concerns you have. And so for this issue, there could have been a committee meeting, and, uh, the public would have been invited, all of the board members, and we could have vetted every, all of your concerns regarding the decision. But that ball, uh, that, that protocol was not utilized, and that's created some of the problems we have today. So I just want you to know, we have a protocol in place, so that this won't happen.
Now, I'm trying to have a question, can I have a larger?
Okay, hold on a minute.
Um, there was, uh, these nineteen, uh, items, uh, it's like fifty thousand dollars for rentals. I'm just, I'm just not familiar, what is that, rent, what falls under that category? Okay, what are we running out?
Roll call.
And I also, um, wanted to ask, um, one of the questions, am I, am I getting by? Okay, so, um, one of the things that, uh, people are trying to get a chance to answer, uh, maybe now we have some of that information. Um, there are a lot of questions that I'm sure they'll be answered soon, so I do hope to see that. But one of the things that I wanted to ask in our budget, that we haven't addressed in the chat, um, is there are multiple items like on page one hundred and four. It lists certain things like band, choir, orchestra, band equipment, um, and then athletics stuff. And, and then there's also line item for after school activity in athletics. I noticed that on many of the line items, like, um, coaching staff, those kinds of things, the numbers vary from school to school. But I noticed on many of these, the numbers don't vary from school to school. And so I was trying to understand, when we talk about line following students, why would every school, regardless of school size, give you that same number?
Talking about sizes, Ms. Smith, oh, damn, I don't know, you're talking about.
Yeah, program funding. So like, there's, there's a line item for every school for A and I, for every school for B.
All the same one.
Yeah, that's the dollar number, type of school, right? So if elementary gets the same, if girls get the same, with the types of schools. And I, and this is not reflected on you, this is apparently not a budget that's been done. I must apologize, I'm one of those board members who always says finance is not my thing, and I don't want to dive into this, but after the term board came with accusations last year, so I'm going to dive into this and prove it wrong. So I got these questions, and that's why these are coming up now, even though I believe this is where the budget is set prior to you. It was pretty hard, I don't know when that started to be that way, but, is that something we're going to look at, teasing, is it? Okay, so do you have an idea about, um, like, will that be this, this whole year, or is that for next school year? Um, and then the other thing was, regarding AR, I just wanted to make it clear, and in curriculum, we've spent money on at some point, um, and then we throw it away. I think as a board, it's important for us to scrutinize that and to ask that any new curriculum, um, that's going to be implemented in our system, be adopted and materialized purpose prior to the start of the school year. And then the other thing was, I have never said that we must have AR as it was in our schools. I have my own personal opinions about it, but the problem is, those are opinions. I have done some research on it, and I found, the research isn't really great on AR. But what I'm hearing from people is that they want something that's going to infer known reading, but testing makes sure that when someone says they've read it, or they didn't, just watch the reviews about it, that they can actually test for, um, confidentiality. I'm on lots of sides of this, I'm not a reader, ADHD here at my, and I don't have that a lot of those. But my kids are gracious readers. But when they got to junior high in high school, that AR stuff was crazy. And the more they read, the more they were supposed to read compared to other kids, I didn't even ask for either. So I, I think that it is important to understand that there is going to be change, but what I attempted to do is to, to get the district to provide us with the research as the reason for the change. And that's, I think, what our, not only our parents, but if we had made that really clear to our employees, our teachers, and our principals before the school year, so they communicated, then we would have had this uproar. But I still don't know the data on that, so that's what we're trying to do.
Roll call, roll please.
Private.
Mr. Sanfenero?
No, due to questions not being answered.
Ms. Hayline?
No.
Mr. Wilson?
No, due to questions not being answered.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
In favor.
Ms. Shellen? Ms. Cooper?
In favor.
Four in favor, three opposed.
Motion, yes, all right. Good, new business item, be suspended of board policy media introduction, and second reading requirements to authorize immediate adoption of corrective policies for audit finding twenty three, twenty four. Answer one more.
Let's ask, was this policy there if there's, uh, possibly anything? I asked, was this policy there if there's, uh, possibly anything? This was directed by a couple of people, developed a document, uh, audit finding two thousand point three, that zero, zero, four, where the, uh, we, the Department of Education requested that we take specific corrective actions. The initial deadline was September eighth, which is just that, that we take specific corrective actions to address findings that were made, uh, in an audit report, the fiscal year ending two thousand and three. That, that means, uh, June thirtieth, two thousand and three was the last date of that. Yeah, thank you, thank you. So, in, 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 in light of that, in light of that, within the deadline, we need to do two, do two, do two things to answer your question, Mr. Sanfenero. First, we need to take, we need to take some immediate action to meet that September eighth deadline. But we also need it understood that this board perhaps wanted the opportunity to weigh in on the policy, uh, development, uh, uh, capacity that we have. And so in light of that, uh, under policy BD, it allows the superintendent to take interim action, but to immediately bring this matter before the board, so you can look at it and to be committed to final determination about what it is that the board might do, uh, as a group. So in light of that, you are in a position, if you will, to send this to whichever committee that you serve is at, um, and to have them consider this matter before it becomes final, with it understood that the document that's been dealt is something interim action up to this point. I want to bring this to your attention, uh, I just, uh, learned that there was an extension of the September eighth, uh, deadline to September nineteenth. Your next board meeting is not, schedule is not until October the seventh. Uh, so just keep all of those dates in mind as you think through what actions you, uh, perhaps would like to take if you want to draft this, do to committee. And I would say, I'll make the argument that superintendent's interim action will stand and hopefully cover the district until September, the board makes a, a final determination about this, or, uh, whether that's through the committee process first, and then onto the full board, or whatever the board put, and that's your question. Yes, sir. Um, if you send those, and I'm questioning, what do I, I'm going to, uh, I'm going to find out. Yes, sir. And it's sent to the policy committee, that they might change, or that this, that that, back to the state. But, but, yes, but it will be the board taking action on what you want your policies to be. Yes, I think, I think, I'm, 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 okay. And I, I, I think I understand your question, and I think the better way to explain it, or to look at it is, the superintendent is taking interim action, but you make difference with that and say what you want to the final action to do. Yes, sir. Mr. Lawrence, the reason we're having kind of rushed this, because the state gave us white notice. Yes, sir, I'm looking at the notice, uh, the notice came in, the actual certified mailing date on that notice was August fifteenth. Yes, and it's just out there, and so, uh, yes, sir, thank you.
Any more questions?
Yeah, I'd like to just add to that, um, this is a corrective action on an older audit, that does not affect on the current, uh, federal government, does not affect on the current case audit, previous file, you know, these previous files. This question, this is, yeah, this, what's the logic of all? Don't worry. It is, it is, do, on three, ten, they're related, yeah, they're related.
Thank you, um, this may come under the lower part of that sheet. It's going to be very painful. My question is, wow, what is the policy that we're putting this under? This just said, that's the main work policy excerpt, so you have a policy, so we're gonna.
Board members, we're going to work with four thoughts about the most logical place, because we have seven, if, if you were going with the draft, we have seven of them. So we're going to work with four thoughts to tell us where these items should be placed.
Okay, now, we wanted to say, according to the audit, when this was presented last year, the employee was paid through the Twenty First Century Community Learning Center co-board program for eighty hours in the month of July without ongoing reflection from the human resources department, in order to shadow time to the program director's condition. Five of the hours paid was for the during of February July holiday. The employee did not become the employee, employee is appointed to the program director for the Twenty First Century Learning Center, and decided not to return to work. The employee was stopped ten fourteen days, fourteen days quickly, and was suddenly, subsequently, this, put it back here, I know this one, you, this one. Um, the employee received a thousand dollars COVID G two supplement paid against basic stabilization fund. The corrective action taken, the school district said they would resolve. The board will adopt appropriate policies to ensure. The board will adopt appropriate policies to ensure, including this situation, when the resources, sources of funding involve federal dollars that obligate the school district to make specific federal compliance to fund. It's resolved according to this. So how did we forget it? How did we not address it until, right now, that we have our letter from the state? That is my question and concern. So I just beg our staff, everybody, and you, the board, of pride, because they are busy. You have things in front of you, it's no responsibility to remind them what's going on. Thank you. Alright. Well, we need to approach now the suspension of the board policy BD.
I can do it, I'm sorry.
No, no, I, but, but, then, correct, that's a good one.
Yes, ma'am, but I need to tell a little bit more.
Okay, please, sir.
Well, I, I don't wanna get in front of the board, uh, and let's all resist.
Please, please.
Not because of that policy. If you don't need to take action on suspending the policy, you're, you're not going to take action on the agenda items department. These two things, though, yes.
I see.
By suspending the policy, then you will be able to take action on the policy draft right now. If you don't plan to take action on the policy draft right now, you don't need to suspend the policy. I point it out, and you both, that's something we need to take.
And we're gonna take action on, uh, see, again.
Yeah, uh, I'm sorry, I have something about this.
Yeah, I have another question. Yes, ma'am. Um, I remember to examine something for each other, they can't see, I remember.
On the holiday draft.
Oh, okay, oh. Uh, you know, school for each other pays compensation for the form work for a staff who's different from their official work assignment? Uh, do you remember what, what that, what, what, okay? Because I don't understand what that means. I'm just trying to figure out what that means.
Well, uh, in one that time period, that was an employee, uh, who was assigned a new position, and has been assigned a job years ago. Uh, that employee of the district, uh, and the employee of the district started to train for a new position that a person at the time. Uh, and they did not go through AR, that process. So this, though, this ensures that all employees, new positions, go through the top and communicate with the first. But that was the Twenty-First Century title, uh, so this person paid out, paid for a job that they did not get.
So, a follow-up question to that, um, you talked about, uh, like principal, people who may become principal shadowing, principal. Uh, the way this reads, it almost looks like they can't do that.
Well, shadowing, shadowing is different, different, because that's, that's not compensation.
But they're, they're getting paid because they already work for us, and then, but they're shadowing a different role. I just wanna make sure legally, when we're looking at the way this is written, that's addressing the real problem, not, not, that it's not gonna give us enough water for that.
Yes, well, you have a couple ways you can put that, this is the situation that the superintendent was talking about, where you had a person who was on a school staff roster for a year. But they were, he was going to have nothing to do with what they were on the school staff roster. Now, to, uh, address sort of the concern that you would have, I would think that, uh, that some type of, they are memorandum understanding or control document that still maintains all this employee's doing, that they are shadowing or, or towards something in existence, whatever their base value.
So do we need to add, uh, just something done to that statement, um, unless it's by human resources? Because that, the way this reads, even within our view of the policy sense, they can't prove it. So I wanna make sure the policy needs room for that.
I think in light of the fact that, that, that you're, there is in this issue, you're pointing it out, that means that others may see it just as you described, so it wouldn't hurt, uh, obviously, uh, I think that was number two.
Oh, yeah.
To, to add a component to it in that matter. It, it is the plans of the board. I always thought I understand that, uh, and so, uh.
So that would be my suggestion, that we add that to allow the district that flexibility for principal shadowing or, or job shadowing. So to say, somebody is a vice principal at, at Flaher Hall, and they're gonna shadow for, what's his name? New principal there, obviously, that's not the site that I would entertain for, but maybe it's, it's now that. So, uh, so the, so the recommendation is to add, uh, just something to that, um, unless, uh, at least, uh, I don't know what, I don't know, like the, uh, unless you have to make certain the principle.
I want to say this, I want to help the student, because we call them number two, talk about, I guess, the position is different from their official work assignment. So the, the superintendent and the Human Resources Department understand that, in the frequency of your current official work assignment, it's being shadowed. You know, uh, that's one way you can handle it, but it doesn't really add.
So either we need to add something, or that y'all, assuming you know you have it somewhere, shadow, it needs to be official, with, inside of their shadow.
Yes, ma'am, we, we can do that.
That's a stat.
Of, 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 so, so Mr. Lawrence, most of you to, uh, provide and be and share together, if you do that. If it is the person board, and there is no objection, I mean, board members can pick and vote now at the same time. Alright, no, I, I make that motion to just provide and do the same.
It's the move of second that we're through, right? Do we, do we all pay for this, uh, project? Yeah, but we're at, by the, the approval of the committee for board docs service liberation. So now.
Okay, I'm listening to the committee for board doc service.
Second.
Lord, it's been moving second that we approve, uh, the committee for board doc service liberation, uh, comments?
Me, that's possible. You said, you wanna talk on I M D, under business, uh, is that not the one you want to talk about?
No.
Okay, it's not?
I agree, I agree.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Lawrence, do you have any additional information regarding this item?
Uh, this, this has been a process that's been unfolding in East Coast, and I want to all to know that board doc is gonna sunset, I mean, the end of this month. I actually spoke with, with East Coast, and, uh, I hope that you have understood the passing that I sent through, uh, and I want all of those passing to be a part of the contract agreement. And we have one or two other things, like maybe the city could block, like, and also a couple of other issues I asked you to do with this. So that the final contract can forth with our policy. What do you think, yes? We approve that all very much. I have a being, I have a, not in both, but. All the.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
The suppose, aye, very kind of, yes. We're at our report, now, report to superintendent, please.
Thank you, uh, one, one thing I, I want to kind of address, and, and not, do a lot of my staff. Uh, first, uh, I do want to bring up how this is our contenders, uh, to address, uh, some of the changes that were made in the, uh, I said, uh, and first, I want to let you know that C E said that we were throwing kids away, and that's totally not at all. We're trying to reduce the violent acts on our campus. Violent games, violence, and weapons, and those things that happen. Uh, and since we announced those changes, which was our parents, that we're going for years with high school students, uh, being, being virtual, and we have been doing it for years on a rotating basis. Uh, and we were rotating, uh, high schools that have issues getting along together and creating environments that are dangerous for our students and dangerous for our faculty and staff. So that is not made, um, and so with this, the first twenty days of school, as a result of these changes, we have zero high school kids that have been expelled, compared to this time last year, we have ten high school kids, uh, that have been expelled. Uh, so, like, we're starting to come up with this, and so, yes, uh, we together, uh, went and visited, watched our parents' last school year. So it was not, it, there being, it was not a decision that we made abruptly. We researched and indicated what our partner schools on what they were doing, and not only watched our parents, but other schools, districts around the state. And based on that, we made a decision to try to keep our students as safe as possible. And this probably would have impacted last year maybe with twenty-five or thirty kids out of eight thousand. So the notion that we were throwing kids away and opening up the, the, the school to prison pipeline, the reality is that people don't wanna give it that responsibility on discipline. It has to start, uh, responsibility on discipline and behavior. If we are losing teachers nationwide in education because of discipline, because of behavior. And what we've been doing for all these years has not worked. It has not changed the results, and so we're looking at something being a little more innovative that will assign kids mentors and checkings and all those different things, uh, because we're trying to expand our alternative school. So also add a component that will allow those kids that are behind to come and work with us to catch up and to allow high schools to be able to, and with parents, look at kids, credit hours. For example, I've compensated the principal today, kid seventeen years old is five credits. That kid, let's be honest, in that traditional setting, that kid's probably not gonna graduate. So apparently, the kid agreed that they were moved to our online academy, and we physically coming to our chara, so we could help those kids catch up. And that's what we're trying to change the settings, so that we can help kids possibly graduate, not drop out of school, and not get incarcerated. So, thank you, I appreciate that, and I appreciate the support you took with me on this, on this issue. Um, accountability is one thing that we look at, and make the decisions to, uh, to, to digital learning, to our high school students. Um, you know, in many cases, in some of these expulsion, there's a lot of success. And, and a lot of statements that, that come out of these ends, um, are, hey, I don't know what's going on with that. You know, and, and speaking of some of the districts, uh, not only this, you know, and some of the conferences I've been to that are domed by way of digital learning, for some of our high school students, there are a lot of positive stories that come out of this. It's not, and as Mr. Moore said, we're not going to, you know, some of these students, as he spoke about, that are seventeen and have five credits. These, these students, as far as they were, have an opportunity to catch up. Uh, some of these kids, some of these students, or some of the stories I've heard, have had courses finished for the semester. So the student is, so many credits behind, and they weren't diligent to, to, to get through as a newbie. They can finish some of these courses faster than some of the kids in the inside of the school. And it gives them an opportunity to catch up per se. Uh, you know, we have our finger on these children, uh, they have mentor coaches, uh, from these charas, that check their attendance day. Uh, additionally, they, uh, you know, at these schools, they have office hours, but if these students want to chime in and ask questions, uh, they can. Um, you know, we, we, we also send our social workers over every Thursday, uh, just to check the visibility of some of these children. Not only the children that are at home, but also the children that are in school. Uh, I've also, I've also spoken to several agencies, uh, to listen to these students' jobs, where they can work at home from eighteen, eleven, and then from twelve to five, they can work part. You know, and these agencies are going to provide these children jobs, you know, uh, despite with their, with their shortcomings up here. Uh, you know, our schools are safe schools, and I tell, we're the, I tell everyone, we're not safe schools, we're safe schools. And we're not, we don't want to allow, we don't want to continue to allow, um, just a few bad apples sometimes, you know, to, to, to be my schools, or have our schools perceived as unsafe schools. I visit these schools all the time, and I walk the halls, and never go up there again, but, but, but anything. I park my car, I stand in the front, I walk around, our schools are safe schools, and, and, and we care about children. Uh, you know, but that, but that parent accountability point is something that, uh, that we wanna stress, uh, because so many times, parents, uh, they're not involved in their children's, or engaged with their children's position. And this is one way that we can do it, and this is something that, you know, we saw our lives in other districts, and we'll see the data in a year. As Mr. Moore stated, we do not have a high school student in these labs, and as a matter of fact, uh, you know, our numbers are down significantly. You know, and I was able to speak to every freshman class coming into, uh, our classroom, you should have lost the federal, and definitely, uh, and I, and I talked to each one of the freshman classes about what's coming here, and, and the numbers are down. You know, I think that they understand what's at stake for this, you know, in this place. So, uh, again, I wanna appreciate to, uh, appreciate to Mr. Moore, he supported this, uh, this decision. Uh, it was a decision that was not made, uh, quickly, we did our, our homework, we spoke to several districts. Uh, I know our personnel spoke to several districts, I had several districts meet to meet, I could use our book that's come out, as to how, if it possibly may work as well, because it's, it's something that, um, that we think is gonna be a net gain for us. You know, net gain, uh, and again, our schools are safe schools, and I wanna just continue to elaborate that, and we're going to assure that moving forward, that schools are going to be safe schools. And don't, you know, children come to school praying, they shouldn't come to school scared about student this or that, you know, we, we are here to protect that children. Thank you.
We're talking about, uh, the, the, sure, it's one of the agencies, you know, providing the job.
Well, I've had, I've had a meeting with workforce development, uh, she's giving me a certain number of, uh, slots, uh, we have follow-up meetings, uh, coming up. Um, and, and, and so, she's, there's, we're going to reach out to some of the employers, um, and they're just gonna be the, they're gonna be the transitional agency, uh, from one to the next. So she's giving me a certain number of slots for these students, and, and, you know, we had, we had a very valuable conversation, and so I said, you know, particularly, it's that, if they're not in state, you know, what, who's in that? So, you know, so reaching out to them is, uh, is a positive for our students that, uh, that people do want to speak to or us, going, so, you know, we're going to get them.
What's, what's the big ass, you know, you know, it's ever, what do we know this program?
I'm sorry, so.
What, what's the big ass, you know, other heroes, you know, what do we know this program?
Well, as far as the, the students that, um, that, that, uh, use, use a learning, uh, many of them, you know, that first, the phone, what they just wanted to know, that their children are wanting to be okay moving forward. Uh, what we tell them is that, hey, now, with the student not, you know, having a new person, you know, someone, personally, we want to have impact in the ball. Every single parent in the league has signed a, a, a parent coach letter that, here's the rule, we stipulate, you have the success of your child. Uh, and if a single one of them signed it, um, and so, you know, we just wanna put the, we wanna put the onus back on those parents, and wanna put the onus back at, for their own childhoods, because after four, five years, those children will be gone, and we're just keeping it to a team. You know, with their child, and has to continue to, to, to be a baby, this child, and ensure this child's success.
Ma'am, Heather?
Yes. Um, Mr. Moore, I think that's a, but, um, does this, is there any, like, ding on their diploma? Or, like, how does this translate to moving on with users, is there any repercussions to that?
No, 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 there are only the custiers behind it, no, I mean, but the discipline is a discipline.
Right, they look still graduate.
But they can still, they can still graduate, and I'll tell you the same one, we're wondering just that, we allow students that got to still receive you to actually walk across the stage. You know, some of these students come to the president, say, hey, Dr. Bruce, messed up, you know, nobody, my friend, is a graduate. You know, and I love Mr. Moore, he's in full support of it, and we allow those students, uh, you know, particularly, we studied at Nellis, you know, that, that, he was walking across the stage. You know, because he had messed up some ideas, and probably just walked across the stage. So, you know, we're going to, you know, what other districts probably would do without that.
Well, if they can do the course and curriculum work, I think that diminishes the other graduates' idea. And I, I voiced sympathiously my objections to that, because, look, I'm sorry.
Um, I, I just wanted to say, I applaud that, that change that we made to what we're doing in this street to go to the rest. Things I've, I've heard, um, many negative things about some of the stuff, I mean, that's one of the things that's a bit of a, sometimes, coming up. I would just ask that in the future, that any kind of huge. I would just ask that in the future, that any kind of huge substantive changes like this, I don't even know if this one's huge, but substantive changes like this, that people are going to question that, if you can bring it to the board before they have been, or even if they're now, uh, with the superhumanity, who has that? Listen.
Hey, I want to before you go, um, when I first heard about the changes, I just want to ask a question. Uh, when were the parents given notice of these changes? And also, um, why just graves nineteen, twelve? These are going to be the students that's going to be in jeopardy of going to jail. They're going to be in jeopardy of the ones that possibly are going to be invasion of people's homes. Those parents you were talking about, more than, more than likely, um, they have more than one job. They have two jobs, some of them do the job. So I'm concerned about the safety, and everybody's saying, I'm second because I'm passionate about this. You say the teacher and you're always going to go and visit these homes, and what about the safety of their teacher?
That's not, that's not actually what you said, you said that mentor, maybe I mentor check-ins, where the students actually come home campus, on chara's campus. And I am concerned about the safety of everyone, but in our current setup, uh, and they're getting, we have already been transitioning to this on a fifty percent basis the last several years, so this is not a new transition. This is just for implementation after going for a few years. We have, we have elementary kids on that same hall and that same building. And I'm concerned about the safety of those kids who are we responsible for, that's the right. So we're talking about having seventeen, eighteen year old kids with some kind of additional things, with some kind of following things. And we're putting them in the same hall and same setting with the first, and the second, and the third, and the fourth.
I didn't want to express today because I'm like, if I'm under the wrong impression, don't we have another building located on the campus that we could not utilize? And then we're paying money for?
And that building that you're speaking of, uh, in time that nation condemned, we moved last year. And we made that building out, because that building had been converted to storage building. And we're preparing that building to utilize and have that separation.
Okay, and I also want to know, um, I don't know if people know, but they, uh, most of those, uh, districts that were involved, especially in the nineteen, the twelve, those are impoverished districts. Ninety percent of those students receive, uh, receive free or reduced up, am I not correct? Okay, I'm just saying, that means food services are now going to be cut down because both children don't have breath or, nor enough. They would not receive that. And I'm just saying about a huge crime, there are people in Holland and, and I just don't understand about the people using it. And then if you were going to bring it in, why wasn't it, it, it transitioned over a period of time? Not just all of a sudden this year, we have those, it opened.
Exactly, you said, we have been transitioning for the last three, we have been alternating weeks.
And I'll say this.
For example, our high school students that, for example, they already expelled, uh, the military expulsion process. And, and this is not for all high schools. We're talking about those things that we, we, we truly unsafe, you know, gang fighting. And we're talking about ammunition and guns on campus. We're not talking about every kid. We also added this year, three ISS positions at these high school campuses in order to keep kids on campus and keep kids in building. So those kids that have been suspended for dress codes and minor offenses, they're going to be sent home. They're taking their home campus because, yet again, you're listening to board members and others and principals and, and not the books. We added positions in school suspension, at least one of our high schools, to help keep kids at schools. So this notion that we're trying to do it really good, that's, that's totally not, that's not true. And I know the paper puts something out on a standard perspective, but that was not, that's not adequate.
And I want to, uh, just say, you know, you yourself, for the problem you have, the way, and you always have told us in your meeting.
I know I'm not going to.
So I'm just saying, remember where you come from.
And, and I, I'll never forget that, Mr. Moore, that's why we implemented this program, because I had to take responsibility for that. Mr. Moore, I thought you were perfect.
This more, I thought you were perfect.